I guess they can't say anything now. How are you feeling?
Good.
You're not a log caller?
No.
Yeah, he's gonna meet me out there in a couple of weeks and we're gonna geolocate the oldest trees.
There we've got.
Okay, there's August. Who's that woman in green? That was cold in my house. I'm going, why is it so cold?
Hey Mike, hey August.
Hi Mike.
How's the mic on this one guys? Can you hear from over here?
I had to go to White Salmon this afternoon and there is a new tea shop in the Harvest Home store. And they've got some wonderful teas. The young fellow there gave me a sample of a similar to Lady Grey, Earl Grey. And that I haven't tried it yet, but he had some other stuff there. It was going, there's not enough tea shops.
There is one that I go to up in I play market when I get up there, but I don't get up there all day.
Well, I was surprised to see him there and they have all sorts of really good munchies and some I and and he had, there was Michael Boyd's new book about mushrooms of the Northwest. You know, Michael lives up in Beesaw. And he gave a few talks to the Grange about mushrooming. Yeah, his book looks great, but it's like 30 bucks. I have to save up for it.
So Commissioner Beck, your letter was received and it was received less than 30 days ago. And so.
Yes, if I understand, I needed to put in a 30 day notice or something to step down from the planning commission. So I guess I will retract that letter. I can talk about it perhaps at the end of the meeting a little bit or speak a little bit about it here now, but I just, I guess I was left with a little bit of uncertainty and a lack of oh, clear separation between city planning commission duties and my role in my work. So I felt it would be best to cleanly cleave those two, to step down from the planning commission. But I did speak with city councilor Annie last week and I just I am uncertain myself as to whether or not I should or continue to serve as a planning commissioner. So I think I'm just going to be in served tonight. I don't know what I'll do in the future and if that resignation letter should be null and void. I'm just, don't have any good answers right now. I apologize.
Okay, I only bring it up to note that we do have a quorum of commissioners.
Yeah.
And I'm just thinking, you know, you have a choice here. You can stay with your job or you can stay on the planning commission. I just, I'm not sure. I like your choice.
I don't think he can, he doesn't, he, well, I got something because I can't do the which, what you asked me for, to apply to the planning commission because I'm the BRB boundary review board
Oh yeah.
member. And actually Debbie Van Camp sent me the RCW that's applicable, but it doesn't cover what Mike is. So I think you're pretty good, Mike, until it comes to boundary reviews or something where you would have to recuse yourself because it would become T and C. But I don't see any issues with you at this point.
Thanks for that vote of confidence, Mary. I don't think it's a strict conflict of interest. There'd be no there, but like Jeff said, it's kind of a decision of planning commission or county planner. I don't know that I I don't know that I even should have accepted the planning commission role in the first place, but anyway, as of right now, I am a planning commissioner for tonight's meeting, so I guess we should proceed.
They're paying you better bucks than we are. Follow the money. Hi David. Are you?
Do you mind if Bernard gets Christie person promoted to panelists?
Who's Christie?
Absolutely. Do you mind if I promote this other?
Is that a?
Yeah, oh yeah, 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 yeah.
Is that a D council member?
Connor Park.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Heard we lost Mike.
We're just discussing that. In any case, his resignation isn't effective for 30 days until 30 days after he submits it. So we've got him at the moment.
I hope you paid the appropriate resignation fee.
I'll look into that, Jeff.
Hello, August.
Should we call this meeting door?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. We'll call the meeting door. And two items of business here tonight. We can get the shorelines management program revisions pending. Make a recommendation to the planning mission and our compatriots from the shoreline advisory committee are with us tonight. And then to take a look at the comprehensive plan process, which goes back to the old caffeine improvement plan, I think, if I'm not mistaken, where we started to work on it, but that's sidetracked by COVID, I think mostly. So with that, Ben, you've got some ideas in terms of how you'd like to see us work through these master plan changes. So
Right.
why don't you lead us through that?
Okay, just an update about where we are and how we got here. So in December of 2018, the city council adopted the program recommended by you all. Or authorized it for submittal to the state for the state's review. The state has completed their review. That review involves very detailed justification, which would have been attachment A to the approval letter. They issued a list of required changes. That would have been attachment E. There were 25 required changes. I'm not running those past you all because they were required and there's no advice needed on those. What you have is attachment C, the list of recommended changes and attachment C.1, which is more detail on staff's recommended changes to the make the definition section of our program consistently. I'm hoping we can process this through the way we've done other things where we've got a red light, yellow light, green light. In this case, it's red light, brown light, green light because yellow can't be seen. Usually I wouldn't preload anything here. Usually I'd let you guys go through and make your own, have your own discussion. Because these are pretty minor, I preloaded and what my hope is for you is that we can go through these 33 recommendations in pretty quick order and fill in what is a green light, what's a red light to say thank you ecology for your recommendation, but we don't want to see the city adopt that portion of it. Green light would be, yeah, we agree, let's put it into our program. And then brown would be, let's talk about it. To the point where we can make recommendations on something. The way, you know, this exercise ideally works is to go through the full list of 33 to see if we have consensus for a red light or a green light on any of them without a lot of discussion. If it looks like something's going to be too much discussion, we just pass it by and then we come back through on the backend to have that more detailed discussion about things. So that's what I'm hoping we can do. I don't know how detailed you want me to get into any specific recommendations.
I think as we touch on each one, if someone has an interest in now, after we go through all 33 of these recommendations and hopefully are a consensus, does the, does the planning commission then need to make a motion to recommend that to the council?
Right. We, so next steps from here, we'll process 33 of these on a temporary basis. So we have a public comment period that's open right now. The city council held a public hearing at their last meeting. There were no verbal testimony, no, no verbal testimony was given, though one of our members was there and may have spoken and technology have been kind to us, but so we the public written commentary closes Monday night, next Monday night before your planning commission meeting. So probably holding off on a recommendation until you get any written comments in from the public is more wise. But we'll get to the point where this, this part's done.
So basically tonight we then actually formulated a, a motion, but not for action until next week, in case we have some additional comments.
So close at five next Monday and.
Before we get into this too deeply, Ben, and I'm reviewing all the, the changes and the language. It doesn't look like there's a lot of discretion on the part of the planning commission to make a lot of substantial decisions. A lot of it does seem textual clarification and definitions and I believe that's the read as to what I've got there. I'm just wondering if the other planning commissioners also have a similar take on this before we get into the the review of the recommended changes. But it does seem like it's mostly text clarifications versus any real discretion we would have to say, let's
Yeah, you're right.
Not include apartment buildings in review of the shorelines or something that would be a substantial benefit or detractor to the public. I don't know if that's correct or not, but I'm thinking that's the way it looks to me.
You know, just from my review, Mike, I would agree. I think most of these changes are pretty straightforward and not all that substantive. They are either scrutiny errors in that first portion or just clarifications, references, et cetera.
I would concur also with both Mike and Jeff there.
Yeah, there are less than a handful of specific ones that I would say are a little bit more than that and I'll try to identify that. But your question too, Mike, if I'm not cutting you off. Not only is it's easy for us to just go through and say it, here's a clarifying thing. Let's benefit our program with that. It's also easy for us because we don't have to go through any wordsmithing process to, to come up with something that might be better. It's here's a recommended change. Do we do that one or do we just leave that on the table? There's not, if we go through wordsmithing and if we try to change something that wasn't recommended, then that'll reinitiate the state review cycle, which we can do. I wouldn't be excited about doing that, but if you're all intent on it, we can do that.
So what you're hoping for basically is a yes or no sort of recommendation on these because ultimately it's the city council that's going to firmly take action.
And I just had the one, the logging thing was, that caught my eye, the log raft. So that, we might want to discuss that.
Sure thing. That didn't catch my eye. So.
Yeah, I'm going, where the hell are you going to put logging rafts? In lock pond? I don't think so.
So the first one was so general as far as just text cleanup that ecology staff lumped it all together. There's 21 changes or there's 21 sections in here that they thought could use a change, number inconsistency. They describe it as global change that we collaborated on. Punctuation, et cetera.
So can we just get a sense of just a thumbs up on these?
Yeah.
Does that work?
And look at us go.
The first page down.
One out of three.
So number two is a good way for us to test our program and so I was thinking this one might generate a little bit more discussion. And so depending on your preferences, we could say, oh, we've got to discuss that, wait until later and discuss it or let's discuss it now so we can process some through one through 33 in that order. The, the discussion generally. Ecology requires us to have a hard reference to our, the critical areas provisions that we implement in shoreline areas. And I took in, in doing my kind of final review before bringing this back, I said, oh, we're missing a hard reference to the zoning code. And so I proposed, hey, here's the hard reference we would use. Ecology said, well, that's good. You can use that if you want to, but we only really require it for critical areas. And so what, what the impact is, is if we get eight years down the road and at some point we had amended the zoning code nominating, it wouldn't apply in shoreline areas. We'd have to go back to the 1990s. 2017.
Oh, okay. But this ordinance doesn't apply to shoreline though.
It's just whether, it's whether an update that we make to that ordinance would apply and the effective date of that.
Well, since staff requests the changes, I would support the change on number two.
Yeah, I don't think so either at this point, Ben. I think it looks good.
Oh, wow. That was one, two, three, four. And I missed two.
I don't currently have an opinion on it, but.
Okay.
All right. And everything Stevens and shoreline master program, not management.
Yeah. On the number three, just like Mary said, the, the act, the type, the reference should be for The jargon is shoreline master program. I've got one thumbs up. Do I have two?
I think they've always called it the shoreline master, but for some reason, I think the. Working part was always called management, but the master program was the whole thing. I don't know where it came from.
I have an older plan. Did you say the last one?
Number three?
Yep.
I've got two online and then. Four. Ecology is recommending just a cleaner way, so.
If something is annexed into the city and it falls under the SMP, then. You don't need the verbiage that's being taken out. So, okay.
Ecology is recognizing that we did a comprehensive job of. Looking at all those and there's, there's not a possibility for some other one to come into play. And so this provided that it was pre-designated. Well, we know it was because that was part of it.
Number four on the next page is where Ashes Lake comes in. It's not ashes, it's ash. Apostrophe S. So I think we should go with the designation that's on our map. Ash. Not Asher.
Well, that's one where it's not part of the recommendation, right?
Probably because they didn't know.
But.
Because they didn't look for that.
Another typo.
Let's.
Yeah, it's a typo.
It does, but it's a typo that's made by the. National Board of Geographic Names. And so they have it as A S H E S. And what it likely was, was that it, the Ash family, A S H E. Apostrophe S, but somewhere in their nomenclature, they drop apostrophes. Anyway, so the, the feds call it ashes. They have jurisdiction for that.
The state is the one that calls it ashes. The feds call it Ash Lake and Little Ash Lake. Little Ash Lake is Little Ash, A S H.
That's not what the fed website says. Anyway.
You know that the feds are not always right.
There's a process to change it. There's a whole process you can go through to change a name. I don't know what that is. We can initiate that.
I will.
But I don't think if I'm looking at, at the specific. Text change here that would really interfere or negate.
No matter what it's called.
Because this text doesn't directly refer to. Or name, Ash or ashes or ash apostrophe S. At all.
Yeah, it does.
It's consistent with our program that we've always used.
Any portion of the ashes lake shoreline. I mean, I don't care in some ways, but I do care for clarity in the future and I'll, I'll be going through that website to change it. So.
Well, in regards to the changes in number four, it looks straightforward. It adds clarity to the language in those sections of the shoreline master program. So I would support the changes in number four. Ashes Lake aside, that's a different issue.
Yep, let's move on then.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. Although I kind of agree clarity is. Never bad.
We dropped this SMC before we adopted a refund policy and then the draft says that no refunds are allowed. This would remove that and refer to the policy.
Sounds good.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Yep. Reminder that we need to update the acknowledgements page with currents. Current grant supports. Fans.
And members.
And members, yeah. One, two, three, four. Five.
We're cruising.
We are. Two elevens of the way.
That's like a two carry weight.
This one should be the easy one to, we had. It would just be a global update to the page header.
Number seven, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Same thing, update the table of contents. In this case, it was a section title that didn't track with amendments to the actual section title.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four.
Pretty hard to argue with that.
Yep.
We could though, I guess. Less more interesting.
All right. Another just.
Other title? That's just.
No opposition. Three nights of the way or three elevens of the way. Number ten, that number as well. Seriously, oh, yeah. They stayed in two different places a little bit differently and adding consistency.
So the twenty eighteen statement of Stevenson, you still have to include that sentence?
Yeah, the, the rest of that paragraph had, had more. Did?
Well.
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay. This is another thing. It was said in multiple places, believe. Yeah, and so say something once while I say it again.
Okay. Where's thirteen one?
One.
Thirteen one. Or one, three, one, sorry. So there's one, three, two, one, three, three, but no one, three, one. Under ten.
They're only recommending, or the, the.
Okay, so one, three, one is okay.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
One, three, one, two.
Where are we at? Eleven?
Yeah, eleven, eleven.
Yeah.
I have a question on the eleven.
Ten?
Okay, yeah, I got.
Oh, you did have ten? You're good with it?
No, I'm fine.
So on eleven now, currently?
Yep. There we go.
On eleven, I'm not sure the language is necessary. In the last paragraph. It says if there's a conflict between the SMP and other regulation. The greatest protection. Of the shoreline ecological resources. Will be determined by the city administrator. And my, my reading of. Ecology is that they incorporate, we wanted to incorporate the critical area in the SMP. To avoid really any conflict or any interpretation. And that the new SMP or the revised with the required changes takes care of avoiding any conflict in the regulation. So I think this last sentence here kind of make it vague and. Actually may create some conflicts or interpretation that ecology is not asking for. Because the required changes take care of everything. So this, by the way, this was not in the current. Draft plan approved by the city council in two thousand eighteen. So this language is just addition to. To what we approved in two thousand eighteen. So I would say, to me, it's confusing and it's not necessary.
And so it is a move from what's above, so that that first paragraph of this eleven, I believe is the data.
It's. One point six relationship to other plans. And if you read the current draft SMP, it's not in there. So this is addition to. What we approved earlier. So in that section on eleven, there's struck through text at the very top of eleven.
And that was in the, in the plan that went to a college.
Oh, they just.
And so it's moving it out of the section that it was in there.
It basically means that the SMP trumps. Other things, right?
It does, but just to finish what I was saying. So that statement appeared in shoreline master program applicability to development. And the recommendation is to move it to relationship to other programs.
So we're simply.
It's just a move of something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know that, yeah, you see something different in yours. Is that in the top part? In the twenty eighteen plan?
Okay. Well, if it's, if it's just a move, I don't have any issue with it. If it's an addition to. What was previously approved and what was required by ecology because ecology. May not require that.
On, on the other side.
That in the, that the great, see the greatest protection, you get two things going on. You've got the no net loss going on. And you get the best, best science by going on too. So that could create. A conflict of interpretation. To me, the proposed, the approved plan. From ecology clarified that issue because it's, and I think the topic review then. You, you made clear that for development, the SMP is surprised. But for vegetation management and stuff like that, this would be the critical area, buffers and mitigation.
This is some new language. As this, if I understand this correctly, in, in the twenty eighteen plan, the part at the top that is struck out. Has now been moved to the one point five.
So in effect here, if we say, let's drop this particular recommendation. That language still stays.
Oh, yeah.
In the master plan.
Yeah. It's just not, it's not, because ecology supported a clarifying edit. This is what this is, a clarifying edit. Moves this one point five text to next section as a more intuitive location for addressing SMP relationship. To other plans and regulations. At this point, nobody is adding any language, right? Other than if it's the law and we said, hey, if it's the law, we're, we're accepting it. And, yeah, so there's no new language here. It's just in a different context.
I guess Bernard, I, I would ask, since it was in the document that was recommended, and that was just on my top. Well, are we thinking now that maybe if we were revisiting this, you, you might rethink that or?
Well, again, what I said, it's been the issue since the beginning of the plan is you get overlay of regulation. You have the critical area and then you have the SMP. And the SMP, to me, according to ecology, required changes regulates. The critical area on the shoreline. And that's really clear now. Now we know really what tool we use and we look at setbacks and everything is clear. But then adding the word that. The, this, the shoreline administrator would. Determine the greatest protection of the shoreline. Is there a conflict? Well, what could create a conflict? That could be a potential. Because if there's a conflict, it seems like we should go back to the SMP approved by ecology. That with the required changes and, and just try to resolve the conflict.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is. Semantics.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think that this changes anything. Like if we didn't do one point five below here.
Yeah.
The top part would still be in effect. If the provisions of the SMP conflict with other applicable local ordinances, policies and regulations. The requirement that most supports the provisions of the SMA is stated in RCW blah, blah. And that provides the greatest protection of shoreline ecological resources shall apply as determined by the shoreline management administrator. And so that's basically the same thing as this down here. It's just being struck out on top. This is what I understand. Am I not understanding correctly?
I just followed along as you read the administrative text.
Yeah.
They took a sentence from one point five and we'll do to one point six.
And so in that event, then in the one point six where it reaches the end of the red part. There's a period and it says city shoreline administrator or designation. Should that be a comma? Splitting character. Yeah, no.
I, I don't want to back down this thing. I'll double check when I have time and I'll send you an email if, if, if there's an issue, if there's an issue, but maybe it's just. There's so much information to review. Let me tell, if it's just a carryover from something that was approved in two eighteen, I don't have any problems. But although. To me, the intervention of the ecology. Clarified really any potential conflict. So to avoid any conflicts, that would be why we have a new revised required SMP.
So, yeah, if you were to reject this suggestion, the language you're talking about would still be improved.
I don't mind the move.
I, 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 I like it. It doesn't matter because it's, it's either you put it here or here and the clarification is that it's under its own subheading, right? That's all it is. But the word conflict is still in there, no matter if it's up here or down below.
I think if it's a nice chat. I agree with you. If, if it was there, I, I would for it, but I will look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it is a good point, you know, making sure that we.
Yeah, we don't want any changes.
Issue, I think, but you know, creating any confusion over the applicability.
Yeah, because ecology approved. The plan that was approved with some required changes. So if it was already in there.
Well, no, no.
Yeah, so anyway, I'll, I'll look at it.
This is ecology's, this is the ecology's approval here that we're going over tonight. They didn't approve that. They, they're sending their recommendations.
To your question, that'd be an ellipsis saying that there's some other sentence that they're not recommending change to.
So on this one, at this time. Given the nature of the change, just moving that language, we're okay.
Well, I, I, I agree with the moving the language that was.
How about you guys?
In the plan, yeah, yeah. And then if, if not. I'll send you an email for written comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if there's a concern over the, the effect of that language in administration.
Yeah.
That's, that's another issue.
I, I don't, I, I don't read it as a, you know, conflicting. Okay.
Ecology doesn't like the word exempt. They like the word except.
Yeah, that's our new guide lights crap.
Less, less exclusory is that what it does.
Yes. We want to be inclusive.
Less exclusive.
One, two, three, four, five, August.
Sorry, we're almost forgetting you guys up there. Pipe up.
Thirteen, this says minor edits.
Yeah, I don't have any issues like that.
I'm okay with that. Thirteen?
Good. Fourteen was to be more descriptive of all the good stuff that we have in the appendix.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
And we're simply highlighting what we, we've got in the appendices.
Yeah, since it's recommended, I would support that one too.
On the next page. Located elsewhere, that's a little vague.
Ecology, the restoration plan. Let me take one. Ecology, the restoration plan. Let me take one step back. At the shoreline comprehensive update required us to do an inventory and characterization report of all the conditions of our shorelines. And then based on that, they asked us to generate a restoration plan about projects that can be undertaken to improve the ecological functions of shorelines. Just to do it, uh, and then regulations in order to protect them. And then a comparison of cumulative impacts. So what they want to make very, very clear is that the restoration plan is voluntary actions and not intended to compel action of applicants.
It's not mitigation.
It's not mitigation, but if you happen to undertake a project on a mitigation basis that's identified there, that's fine. But it's not intended to function as mitigation.
You don't get credit for it.
No, you get, you would get credit for it because, but they, they just want to separate that out. That effort wasn't about mitigating projects.
Um, can I ask a question? Definitions, do we have definitions?
There's a bunch in the back.
So, uh, reaches the defined? I don't have my reading glasses.
Reach is not defined, but reach was defined.
Because, you know, I mean, I kind of know what reach is because when people start talking about it, when you're looking at, but I, I'm pretty sure that outside this room, if you asked Joe outside, he would not know what a reach is.
Scope.
We identified reaches in that inventory and characterization report.
Yeah, a reach is a physical thing.
Yeah. And so they're, they're located within that.
So they're mapped back to. Mapped and described in terms of the physical features that define that reach, tributary to tributary.
And there's some reference in the SMP to go to that to see.
I don't believe that there is.
Should there be?
Potentially.
Well, I'm just asking because you, you know, you, you want people to know, have more information, not less. And if you're telling them to do something in the same reach or watershed, then you've got to tell them what, where the reach is.
Yeah.
So it should at least be in the appendix.
Well, it's, this is a good discussion point where it's not something that's recommended. And so we could categorize it as something to include for another cycle of ecology review and recommended required changes. We could put it on the list of, hey, let's do that with our next.
Yeah.
Periodic update or do a cycle.
Yeah, if you, if you just remember, yeah.
I'll try.
Well, if we're looking for clarity, you know, I mean, if you, if you're, if you're going to tell somebody to do something and tell them to do it somewhere, then you should at least give them a map. For that.
If you're looking at the restoration.
I mean, it was pretty explained in the text, you know, let's look at the SEDs and everything. So I, I don't think it's undefined.
Well, it's, it's a separate document.
Yeah, but if you read the whole document, you understand where the reaches are.
I don't know. Do you?
It's in the restoration.
Yeah, I do.
But the restoration.
It is in the restoration plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, which this references the restoration plan.
Yeah, but the alternative compensatory mitigation located, located elsewhere in the same reach or watershed, the restoration plan is struck out, isn't it?
It's just moved.
Located in the rest, but this is mitigation, compensatory mitigation in the same reach, not restoration. It's mitigation.
You could undertake restoration for mitigation purposes, or you could undertake it just for the lift purposes.
Yeah, but ecology has said that mitigation is not restoration and vice versa. I, I'm just saying for clarity, I would assume that you just want to say for reach what it is, but that's okay. I can live with what we have.
Yeah, I, I can support this change. It gives more flexibility to property owners in the city.
Do I care? Protect the environment.
All right. Water plane management, this is one of our counterparts. I'm saying half of this makes sense, half of it doesn't. And the reason why I say that is SMP 20 or 18.13 includes its own internal reference to 15.24. And reliance on the firms. So it becomes redundant to include it here, but it doesn't hurt anything either.
So the, the, the new FEMA floodplain maps have even presented them. And the county had a presentation on it. Oh, okay.
You know, I don't have any problems with this being here. Yeah, it may be redundant somewhere, but it is. It gives you everything within that applicability. I, I, I think that for, if I'm a user of the document, uh, rather than an author of the document, I think it probably is helpful.
So what is, uh, um, yeah, is it defined someplace?
What insurance rate map?
Is it defined someplace? Or is this the first definition of it? And if it is the first definition, then it has to be spelled out. You don't just drop an acronym in the middle of a document.
It is not included.
1813105 defines FEMA, but it doesn't define firms.
Yeah, that needs to be defined. So either written out totally, which I think you can without changing anything. And then included in parentheses.
1524.040 does refer to that insurance.
But this is.
But it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't say firms, but that's, that's what it.
Yeah, so you shouldn't introduce acronyms into documents without defining them at some point, preferably the first time they're defined.
Ben, could we simply spell that out here?
Yes, I think. Yeah, it's not a substantive change. Just spell it out.
Fine with that.
Yeah.
All this apology.
Spell it out, put in parentheses, and if it's someplace else, great. Having come from the military, I always had a damn sheet attached with all the acronyms at the end of my reports.
Is that the consensus?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Okay. 17?
17, visual public access. This is one where it's kind of substantive. It's, it looks like a word was just dropped. Because if you read it without that, then it doesn't make much sense. But it also reads like it's an additional regulation, so.
Ecology wants it, so.
I think it clarifies it.
Public access decisions. This is something that I added for change because it looks like whatever we. No, it's, it's something to ease implementation so that when we review a, a permit, here's an instruction for planning commission to make it fly.
Yeah. I'm certainly good with that. Yeah.
Again, this is one, the water quality is one where could look like a new regulation, uh, depending on how you read it. So hoping that that you all read it and determine what you see, especially, uh, water quality is visibly degraded versus in some, in some way chemically degraded. Or degraded generally. Uh, and then a pertinent structure applies only to residential, so that's replaced. One, two, three, four, five.
I don't even know what a pertinent means.
No, there's a definition. Which is why they use obscure words they have to look for.
Yeah.
Minor edit to in 2021, I believe, is the next.
Yeah.
Go on a second one. I, I need to read this one.
Which one are you reading?
20. The provisions in this chapter apply to specific uses and types of development typically occur in shoreline areas. Either have the dad or occurring.
You're right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Keep the that, I think.
That typically occur in shoreline areas. Okay, so the dad, that is back?
Well, it'd be one or the other, right?
Yeah, it has to be one or the other.
Yeah, so this is a red. I, I, I went there without, with only seeing two people say.
I'm going with that.
Don't accept. Because that's a thumbs down.
Which way? What, what are you doing?
If it's red, it goes this way.
Well, you have two reds. Which one do you want? Are we doing that or are we occurring?
Well, the proposed change.
There's two proposed changes.
So if you reject them both, it'd be red.
You can't. It, it doesn't make sense. It's grammatically incorrect. You've got to have either that or you have occur that occur in, in whatever, in shoreline areas.
Well, it would be, Mary, if we left the that in and took out the ing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You've got either one or the other, but you can't delete both.
Correct. Which one do you want?
I like that.
That, yeah, typically occur and.
Okay, we've got more support for that.
Yeah.
All right.
So, okay. Prove that person. Are we on 21?
21.
We are on 21.
Okay. Yeah.
Green is you approved the change, right? Why do you go red?
Because he's going to make a little change to the change.
You're removing something that we're approving your proposed changes, right?
Somebody needs more beer. Okay. Okay, so we're clear. That is staying in and ing has taken a walk.
Yep.
Sebo.
Sebo, sebo. Okay.
So this is just spelling out the names of the agencies.
Yeah, is that supposed to be public health or is it the health department? The health or public health?
At the state level, it's called the health, the Department of Health.
Okay, all right. No problem then.
Comes up on that one?
Yeah.
Decision authority on site planning. This is one that I recommended is a substantive change. The draft we used put this responsibility on the administrator, the shoreline administrator of reviewing the site plan to make sure that the water dependent uses were in the right place. And that'd be the only place where the administrator in, in your program has an authority instead of the planning commission having that decision-making authority. And so the proposal would be to.
The city?
Yeah.
Generalize it.
Yeah, the Royal City.
Sure, going there.
Well, I, I, yeah, I think, I think that's better.
Yes. August, some consistency there.
23, I just wrote down minor edit. Uh, missing words.
That's I'm okay with.
Online commissioners.
23? Mike, are you with us?
Okay.
Just had to close a window.
Yeah, I just looked at 1.5. It, I'm fine. It's, it's because that, yes.
Thank you, Bernard. So 24?
24.
With another that, just to.
S test.
It's an addition.
Yeah. Yeah, it does.
I like that one.
Number three.
Four, five, six. Generalizing the statement. What it is instead of some unnecessary text.
Instream structures include, okay.
I guess I'm okay with this, although when we're doing fish restoration, we do a lot of instream structures. None of those. They're engineered log gear.
Okay, Bernard, take it away.
I'm fine with 26.
The minor setback adjustment.
I, our original draft relied on the county's draft. And I think, I'm not sure whether we changed it or how much we changed it. And nevermind, the county's draft didn't make it into your package for the people. So we've got this. Bernard had a thumbs up on that. I missed it if anyone else did.
I have a question. Okay, so you've got that setback thing before the council. Is that going to be affected by this or will this affect that?
That would provide the most protection for.
With water.
Shoreline resources.
Yeah, I don't know what those, you know, where those things are, whether they have a creek running through them or whatever. So this would apply actually.
Did we address that last time? Because that was.
Recommended.
Okay, yeah, my opinion did not change on it.
But two to one vote, so it's split, split vote. With that, uh, question answered, Mary, was there any?
You know, I, somebody's going to sue if they're in the right, so it's okay. I just, I think setbacks are there for a reason and they came about for a reason. And I'm not sure that we need to reinvent the wheel over and over again, but that's just my personal view.
One, two, three, four, five.
Basically gives the administrator some discretion to provide a partial variance. So the discretion to provide a partial variance.
I got a letter from a guy saying something about there being four out, houses or out. Buildings. I don't know who Don Tucker is. Did you get that?
I did get that, yeah. He had some recommendations, follow up on our, our last.
Okay.
It's, we, you know, we come back to that.
And then L is that no loss of.
No net loss of.
No net loss, okay. And that's defined somewhere?
Yes, it is defined somewhere.
It should be defined someplace before it gets here or wherever, if this is first thing.
We're just like, you keep toying with doing that. Avoiding no net loss and going to have ecological gain requirements.
Well, that, that only makes sense if you have a baseline to work.
I was looking at the wrong thing earlier when I answered the question about firms. Let me. Bernard, you have it pulled up. Can, can you go look at the glossary of the S M P?
The what section?
Glossary.
Glossary. Now, so you see if N N L is an acronym that's defined.
I know we discussed it.
Okay, I have the gloss.
N N L.
No net loss.
And that class, okay.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I know, I know we talked about it when we were doing the thing, but yeah, it should be defined. No, yes?
Well, I'm, maybe I'm looking at the wrong, I mean, I'm looking at the S M P.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No net, N N L, is that an acronym in there?
N N L, let me see, no. No, it was non-conforming use. That's it.
No net.
Native vegetation.
Yeah, no net loss, yeah.
Well, it should be that.
Yeah, it should be there, but it isn't. Yeah, it should be defined in the glossary. I think you should serve beer at these things. Or maybe wine. You go smoothie.
Like, I mean, it's defined in the text, you know.
Is, is it defined in the text?
Well, I'm sure it is, yeah.
No, 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 don't think, don't think.
Okay, I can do it fine.
Say. People love to use acronyms and then they don't define them. That's me nuts.
L O L.
The only one I use is L O L.
Well, it is in Ecology's shoreline master program guidance.
Well, we're using it here to ensure N N L, so.
I was trying to look for, there's some, some reference.
Yeah.
Somewhere along.
I can't remember where we saw it and when we were discussing this many moons ago.
Okay, firm is defined.
It is.
Blood insurance rate map does appear in the glossary.
And N N L?
Does not.
Yeah.
It doesn't appear in the plan, the program.
So how can they recommend it? Ecology recommends revisions for clarification to avoid overly broad implementation of this provision to ensure N N L.
No nonsense legislation.
That, that won't, that won't be in our shoreline master program though, will it? That's just the clarifying notes that Ben has put together for tonight's presentation. Unless I'm missing something, they call, or Ecology's notes.
So no net loss is not in our S M P?
No net loss is, N N L is not.
N N L is just a, in the explanations for tonight.
Yeah, but that's okay. As long as N N L isn't in the plan and if, if no net loss is defined as N N L, that's fine. But. You know, even if it is just in the notes, how is it in the plan? Is it just always no net loss or do we use N N L?
Always no net loss.
Okay, I'm fine with it then.
Do we vote on that yet?
Are we on twenty seven?
Yeah.
Yes, we're on twenty seven.
Okay.
Where, where can we put docs except Gloria's and Rock Hand?
Plumby River.
Yeah, the one down where the cutters.
Oh, I guess. Well, I, I don't have any problems with this one.
I'm okay with that.
Three, twenty seven. Five. August. Six. All right, I want to return to this one here. Firm does appear. In the definitions.
What satisfies me?
Right. Twenty eight. Twenty eight.
Crazy. Looks good.
One, two, three, four, five. Six.
We're sliding into home base.
Within that.
I, I don't have a problem with twenty nine.
Did we eliminate applicability or did we stick it somewhere else?
That would just be C, so A will be still apply.
Oh, okay. I'm good with twenty one, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, four, five, six.
I just, I saw you wave, Mike.
I have a kind of slightly unrelated topic, but it, it's related to this. The railroad extension where they're dumping all the gravel and building the extension, what? Where does that all get? I mean, did we know about that as the city or do they just kind of do that with the state?
Railroad is a law unto itself.
They apparently are encouraged to comply with local regulations, but compelling them to imply is very difficult. So, no, they haven't, they have not obtained a city permit for the work that they're doing.
Did they have an ace permit?
Uh, yes, they do.
Army Corps of Engineers, so they have to comply with whatever they have jurisdiction.
Yeah, apparently they didn't really account for how much water was going to be coming down river on Friday. They got a little, a little anxious there, I think.
Yeah, they seem to be doing a lot on the east side of the trestle and the west side, the two.
And they, did they provide like a plan of what it's going to look like? Are they going to do one bridge or two bridges or?
It's only going to be one, they're replacing the trestle as far as I know.
One track for one track.
Yeah, it's going to be as big as that stupid thing at Draino Lake. It's huge.
Yeah.
You know, I don't understand. I mean, unless they're planning on thirty foot high stock, railroad stock or something. Those bridges that have been replaced are humongous.
I haven't seen any.
Yeah, yeah, I just went there today.
Your understanding is that it's going to stay as a one single.
Yeah, it is one single.
Interestingly, with the Federal Railroad Administration, August and local oversight. From my understanding, the water is one of the few areas where a local jurisdiction can make a claim to some regulatory authority. Under the Clean Water Act, if there are potential impacts related to the Clean Water Act, a local jurisdiction can claim authority. But getting to that point. To where you get the local railroad company to comply or to, you know, to work with a jurisdiction is often a heavy lift, even with. The understanding that Clean Water Act does apply to the railroads, so.
They don't care.
Yeah, they, they're difficult to work with.
It just, it just was a lot more groundwork going in there than I expected. And when they started to fill in the inlet to where the tug bait. Boat basin was kind of like, well, I guess that's not going to be there anymore. They put a pipe in, so. I was just curious.
We need a board from this or any fill.
Yeah.
It's within city jurisdiction.
You might want to go take a look out there then.
We've had all the discussions. The calculus was made above my level to say, just don't.
Yeah, they're, they're putting in a, a bridge that's way heavier than this trestle. So they probably need, because you heard all that pounding, so they're putting in all those, whatever, what are pilings to support that stupid trestle.
You can go and get a copy of the court permit too.
Yeah, we'll have to, well, we could, we could all ask for it. Evan, I think Evan, Evan looked up his last name. These are.
Carnes.
Yeah, Evan Carnes is a USA sky for this reason. Okay, so are we on twenty nine?
I thought we finished twenty nine.
Ready?
Okay, we're on thirty then. My favorite thing, definitions. Global change. Even if not defined in the S M P. I like Ecology recommends revision to reference those terms defined by statute and rule as applicable, even if not defined in the S M P.
It looks good to me.
Yep.
Yep. Four, five, six.
Okay.
I don't really have a good.
So for this one?
Yeah. Explanation of this one. There is. Water-dependent. Fish farms, and that's ones that are just bringing in river water to run whatever process they need. And there's non-water-dependent fish farms that would take water from the city pipe to feed the fish. So sustain the fish. And so Ecology parses between them and says, one is water. When dependent and we should regulate it as such, and this is their, their way to do that, to say, hey, that other one. Agricultural facility.
Well, they're, they're regulated by the Fed anyway, aren't they?
Regulated by the state.
Are, are they? The hatchery, sir? I thought they were federal.
Well, it depends. On the hatchery.
Yeah.
You know, most of our hatcheries in the state are state hatcheries, or more state hatcheries, they're federal hatcheries.
Yeah, oh, okay.
But you can start in Atlantic salmon. Hatchery of finfish.
That would require state.
Well, somebody could try to grow tilapia in tanks.
Yeah, isn't this meant to like regulate catfish in your bathtub? Commercial, commercial catfish, commercial catfish operation.
But the middle school up in Hood River, actually, that's what their science teacher did. They're, they're growing tilapia and using the fertilizer to fertilize their vegetables. And it's in that building, the middle school building in Hood River. It's really a great thing to see. Not that I would eat their tilapia. So I, I don't have a problem with this. That's what, I mean, that's what they want to. I'm fairly sure that it's not going to affect any of us.
Yeah, it's hard to, I think that's pretty straightforward. I don't have.
I think it is, yeah.
Thirty one, I'm okay with thirty one.
Me too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where are you then?
Thirty two. Thirty two. Was just checking there to make sure that S E D is still out, and it is in the first.
Well, I think, yeah, you already did that in the beginning. Okay.
Okay, the thirty two as well, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's have a good debate on thirty three, because I think we've been pretty light.
Okay.
Pretty hard to argue with this one, Dan.
Isn't that one that Ecology was concerned about to get a record of changes?
What's that?
What?
It, it, it seems like they wanted to monitor all the, the changes, all the applications. Are going through approval. Is that addressing their concern?
This would be, I don't know the answer to your question. This would be, if we were to make an amendment to. Re, re spell Ashley, Ash's lake. Then we would, in here, in this record of changes, after Ecology does their review and approval. We would say that page fifteen, thirty six, forty two were all changed. So that if somebody is referring to an older document that they had saved. And then with, here's the, the trail.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, I, I think you have a very good point, Bernard, because. You want to be able to go back in the record to see what happened, so you need dates.
Well, for the.
But not in this particular one, but it is nice to see how the changes came about, so you can see how people's ideas change and everything. And laws change too.
So that, how are you going to satisfy their, their requirements for. Monitoring the no net loss.
We'll, we'll track the. Each permit and in each permits. The planning commission will have to make findings of, does it achieve that? So that permit itself will. Will be that review. Some of the guidance on that when. Others talk about it as well, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it and we'll watch what change. So there, there's nothing that's clear. From peer jurisdictions about what they're doing, but we'll track all the permits. They come through, we'll track planning commission decisions on, on no net loss. If we do restoration projects, then there's a, there's a net lift. But each project itself needs to be no net loss. They can't rely on some of these elsewhere. That's just something that they provide. So.
And that's from the time of approval. It starts. Yeah, it starts. I just set the date. Launch.
So it's a baseline? You need baselines.
Yeah, the way they design it is that the baseline is the inventory characterization report.
And so you have to go back to it to do everything.
Yeah, and looking at all the improvements related to the waterfall, especially the port, you know. It seems like it would be more fair to start. At the time of the approval by the city council of two thousand eighteen. So that we get some credit for all the good work that was done in Stevenson. As a positive, you know, uh, for, for the environment. I mean, there's a lot of, uh. Feet of waterfall to.
Yeah, but there were a lot of trees cut there too. Do you remember those trees that I called you about that the restaurant cut because they wanted a view? Well, those never got planted. And, uh, I have, still have heartburn about Levin's Point being used as a point of entry. Probably, the windsurfers will take it over. Everybody knows they will. And it's not supposed to be a entry to the river. It's supposed to be a mitigation from what the crap they pulled on in.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We decided to go with mitigation, so we give that. For mitigation, so we might as well get some credit for it, but the, the concept of mitigation is you harmed it here, so you're, you're just bringing yourself to level. You have to look at.
You screwed up.
If, if there's any way to push toward the. The time where it was approved by the city council, if it benefits one way or the other.
Somebody should pay. Are there any, uh? Well, well, the dredging destroyed all the reds and rock crays, uh, but we did have fish coming back. Are, are there any fish in this creek?
There are fish there.
Well, we used to have salmon in there.
I don't know. Able to walk across without getting your feet wet, stepping on salmon.
Yeah, there were, there, yeah, the, what are they called? Oh, help.
We're steelhead.
Steelhead that came there. I mean, they were like this big, and then we do have those little fish that are about this big. They have a lot of fins. They go up Rock Creek too. I, you see them in the water in April. They call them sucker fish.
I know.
And they're iridescent too, but they have lots of little fins on them. They're really pretty.
Oh, you're talking about a pterocystus? No?
I sent a picture to.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. That's the scientific, right?
We were, we worked with, say, Fish Wildlife to plant steelhead in there as a compensatory. Little loss of steelhead fisheries in.
Well, they used to come up there. I mean, uh, pre twen- two thousand seven, they were always, uh, they'd hide out under the bridge there, the footbridge. Because the water was deeper there, and then when they dredged, they screwed up the entire ecology of the system. And, but I, I, I think some steelhead are back. I don't know. They're so opportunistic.
Well, they are, yeah. They'll colonize those areas.
Okay.
It's interesting too, that slope stability and all the washout, they probably got much greater impact on. Their activities, they're not spawning in that lower portion of steelhead.
No, they go up higher. But they used to be able to go up higher. Okay, so we're moving on to our. Comprehensive thingy.
Okay, so this will, um, appear on the March fourteenth agenda also. Or, or are, are you available for that meeting? Or do you?
I can make it, yeah.
It's our regular meeting, right?
Regular meeting. Um, we'll try to get this one.
What are we gonna do?
So right now, we've got general agreement to recommend this. But, all right, so the shoreline advisory committee could, tonight, could say, yeah, we're gonna make those recommendations. We'll move to make those recommendations and then be done with it. Planning Commission, however, uh, should wait until, or the city council, doesn't matter. So that adds a third way, but, uh. This group could say, we recommend this, no matter what the public comments say. Or, and, and let the city council deal with public comments. Or it could say, yeah, we, we did a lot of good work with this. Uh, let's wait to make an official recommendation until after public comments.
Well, you might get some substantive public comments, but they might be just self-serving, but that's okay. They're still public comments.
So, yeah, it's up to you whether you're comfortable making a recommendation without seeing public comment.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah.
Those are all, all recommendation to the city council.
I think because there's nothing really new. Uh, no, it's just changes, I think, you know, uh, public comment.
I.
Doesn't really matter.
Because I think we really made a commitment to be open to public comment, and I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna be open to that commitment. I think we wait till the public comment period closes, and so I, I, I think for the planning commission, certainly. We don't formally take a motion to make this a recommendation until our meeting next week.
No hurry.
Okay, that's, I, I can.
Yeah. I support that too. I think Jeff's, you know, mentioning our commitment to public comment and engaging the public, I think is a very sound. Uh, track or sound course to continue, and I would support waiting until we have an opportunity to listen to public comment on this one.
Sure. Okay. The shoreline advisory committee could take that same approach, you could. But if, if you can be here, why not just come back and leave?
March.
We'd love to if you come back.
Or you could be done with it tonight and say, yeah, planning mission sorted out.
Can we, uh, do it by email?
Um, no.
Can we be online?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm soon.
Yeah.
You mean you don't wanna be here with us?
Okay.
We had cocktails and wine.
And lunch. We're not done yet, Dumbo, anyway.
We'll be to just identify which of the thirty three recommendations the public comment is related to. And so then we're only, and I'll highlight it and say we're only dealing with those.
Since the public had a public comment period, I mean, two of them, two or three of them. And so even if somebody had a substantive change. Unless you wanna reopen this whole process, there's not much you're gonna do. You can, you can hear them and then maybe save them for the next go around. And I'll be seventy five years old then, so I won't care.
I, I think allowing, allowing the public to voice their opinion is a valid part of public government. I think we should just. Even if they're not substantive, even if it's something completely unrelated, in, in terms of it, people may have an interest in. Telling us that they don't like the shoreline master program whatsoever, but that's still, you know, I.
They might want a definition of no net law. Who knows?
Yeah.
There you go.
Wait, the way that set short, you're gonna go back from that ecological game.
Okay.
All right.
You guys still have some work.
Comprehensive plan amendment.
I don't think my name was on the shoreline advisory committee list. I, I, you know, I could have totally not seen it, but. I don't remember. Yeah, I looked at it and I thought, hmm. Cause it listed all the names. I saw Justin.
Yeah, I think so.
Your honor.
Oh, am I? Oh, okay, good. My copy must be wrong.
All right. It could be that I'm looking at a different route.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for coming, Bernard. Thank you for being here with your magic machine.
Okay, Ben.
Okay. Uh, comprehensive plan amendment, you received an application in twenty nineteen from city staff, uh, saying amend, uh, goal eight. Uh, bring it in line with more, um. Uh, sound principles about capital facilities planning. And so that amendment was proposed. We got to the point where we were reviewing, um. Changes in a similar way to required and recommended changes. Uh, changes to other parts of the document to ensure internal consistency if we agreed with those changes to, uh, goal. And so those were identified, uh, two years ago. Um, almost to the day. And that's attached to this, and the discussion at that point was about, uh, public involvement. And so that was, that preceded our, uh, public engagement, public involvement commitment, and so, uh. I don't have. Much thought that we'll dive too much into the, the substance of, of this tonight, but we certainly can and talk about it. It's just a, a refresher to see where we were.
Well, it's something we, that the city still wants to have within that comprehensive plan, and I think. When we talked about it as a planning condition, we saw the value of having a capital improvement element in the plan itself. So we were just talking about how do we proceed in terms of doing that review? And how do we engage the public in that conversation? That's still. Very valid questions. We have a sense here, Ben, as to. We've had a work calendar in the past. Really, at that point right now, and I think as we talked about, I think earlier today. Having several vacancies or potential vacancies on the, on the planning commission, it might be nice to have those folks engaged in, in a calendar, but.
You mean a work plan?
A work plan.
Yeah, it helps to have a work plan.
Well, yeah, certainly to lay out our work, uh, and, and sort of pace ourselves here in terms of making sure we. We get this done. I don't know, what, what's your sense? My sense is. In some ways, this is fairly straightforward. And, and of course, that's the pitfall, because there'll be something in here that, that isn't straightforward in some ways.
What, are you looking for a public participation plan for this?
I think it should be a component of our review schedule, including the, the.
Cause yeah, if you ask, people will tell you. Uh, I mean, there's, people are talking about. Our city.
And it, it gets into the same thing here though, too, that we're not looking at a rewrite of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
We can at any time. This proposal is based on what was submitted. And so, you, you know.
So it's the issue here, whether or not we go with, with what was submitted or recommend, recommended or. Do we somehow modify or amend that? Are, are, are those the two sort of paths that we're looking at?
I think that that's the way it should be approached, um, to ease your time. Say, yes, we agree with this, or, or no, we don't. Because if you get into the point where. Say something was submitted by a member of the public. You're gonna go through a similar review process. Do we agree with this, um, in principle and, and the specifics? Is it internally consistent? Is there a way to make it internally consistent because we agree so much? And do that. And, and make it internally consistent with those others. But i- if somebody says, I think that you should, um. Re-look at future land use map to consider, uh, trade uses on this side of town over here. And the planning commission gets into the habit of, uh, reviewing the proposal and saying, uh, uh. No, we don't agree with that, but since we're looking at future land use maps, we're gonna change the designations for this over here. Well, that's not really what you were asked to do.
No.
And that's where it becomes really more of a. Where the, the public involvement is much more, uh, important, because it's something that's initiated just within. These halls here.
When's the come sign come up for review?
Uh, doesn't. It's on a biennial basis. We'll review any amendment proposals.
So our twenty, wasn't it done in twenty thirteen?
Yep.
We, we finished it, yeah. It took, it took a lot of public participation. You all did a really good job on that. Uh, so. Well, you should do it every ten years, fifteen years, at least, or twenty years.
And in other jurisdictions, um, it's on either an eight or a ten year cycle. It changes back and forth. I think it's on ten years right now, but I'm not positive of that.
So we wanna confine the scope of this review to, to the capital facilities.
Provisions, right? Right?
And I assume that we're gonna have to have some participation. With the public first, right?
When does she start?
Monday.
And so. This is something we wait till we have a chance to discuss with her. I mean, I think this is something we wanna do. But I don't wanna get too far out ahead of, of her, as she's coming on board and, and, and trying to come up to speed. And I don't wanna swamp her with this stuff, but.
Maybe, maybe our first, um. First effort could be to review the full list of, uh, changes and say. Public Works Director input is needed before we make anything, or we can make the, we, with.
Sort of a work session, is what you're saying, is to just go through the, the proposed.
That could keep us moving forward, maybe on next Monday.
Yeah.
Without swamping her immediately.
Yeah.
And so then her, her list of things to review and, and put in the context is, uh, I mean, we have the size of, of your list, or something like that. Similar exercise.
Do we have time to, is there time on the agenda next week to do that?
Hey, at least get a start, get us further in talking about public involvement, and then, um.
Through doing this kind of an exercise in terms of.
At least get started.
More do we need, you know, how might we do?
At least getting started.
And to talk then about how we might also go about the public engagement. How does that sound?
You'll still be here next week, Mike.
Okay.
I guess August isn't here, so we can just assume that he agrees.
Well, the, the city should clarify for you what kind of capital facilities they're talking about, right?
That's part of.
The standards for.
Because the verbiage here, the, um, or enhance existing facilities and provide new assets. That will support service needs and community growth in an efficient manner.
Yes.
How the heck are, is the planning commission supposed to get new assets? Does she mean money, or?
Where are you reading that?
That's in the amendment application. That's a very broad.
Well, it's, it's sort of a city policy, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I don't know, uh, to preserve or enhance existing facilities and provide new assets. Like, that will support serving, service needs and community growth in an efficient manner. So I, I think instead of assets, she probably means the, the. Plans and other things, the buildings, actual. Real stuff. Not what I think of as, as an asset once it's built.
I'm not gonna parse those words, cause, you know, that's a brief summary, and then we've got detail.
But I think you're probably right, yeah, which I, I think it, it probably is existing in, in new facilities that you need to provide services. Improvements.
Like the water treatment plant?
Water treatment plants, pipelines, you know. Water treatment has pipelines, you know, well.
Did they ever move the telephone lines across the bridge, Rock Creek Bridge? Are they still there?
I assume they're still there.
That, that might be one thing to work on.
Just to enlarge the pipe underneath it.
Yeah, sewer, sewer pipe is new, new sewer pipe is going in there. The bigger and the older one will come off of there.
So hold up, steal it.
Yeah.
So next week, we'll, we'll talk about scoping this in terms of where we might need some additional inquiry. Yeah, it looks pretty good. We'll talk about then how we want to engage the public and invite them to participate in this process, looking at how we've got with the public works director. Because again, ultimately city cats, it's going to be pretty interesting in, in terms of all the planning that the city does.
Yeah, and we've been moving forward with better coordinating capital improvement projects, um, in the absence of this amendment, just laying it out there on one sheet, what's in all of our various plans and the timeline for that. That's something that we weren't doing before, so.
That means you don't do one thing and then come back and tear it up and.
Right. It, it's certainly, it's a common, common tactic used by municipalities to, yeah, to not double down, uh, to have to dig up a street twice to install water. And then the next year they have the sewer project. Hopefully this capital facilities would yeah, get everything coordinated in the city to where on a five-year window or six-year window, all that would be laid out so that we not
That, that is a very good.
More efficient.
Yes, that is a very good point, Mike. And is that something that you all will consider when you're doing this?
I think Leana had actually brought that up in some of the, the earlier meetings about this, was that, that one of that very reason to
Yeah.
Extending the water and sewer where it hasn't been before. They, they could just.
Internet broadband up the street.
Well, I think we've seen the city do that when they were doing the Russell Street stuff. You know, there was that sort of coordination with the other utilities in terms of what was going on there. So in some ways, this sort of reinforces some, some of the policy work that the city's already doing and brings it into the comprehensive.
So there's a lot of internal uh, direction that's in here towards city, um, staff, public works, uh, decision. There's a lot of that. What I don't want to be lost in the discussion is where it talks about the level of service standards. Yeah. Because that not only applies within city staff, but that sets up to apply, uh, to the world too, where if somebody proposes, uh, like huge developments, and I'm just looking through, um, they would add a thousand population. And we've got this level of service standard to say, we need ten acres of park per thousand population. Tying development decisions, permitting decisions to a level of service standards means that that development is going to need to make sure that we have the ten acres necessary, um, per population. If we don't build that into your project, your project doesn't get approved. So that's an example. There are other levels of service standards that are included in here. You could be.
Like trails?
I don't believe trails is, but I'm not, um, familiar right off the.
Of course, it's more than just that one huge development. It's sort of that, that incremental development, all a bunch of little developments that come together, then all of a sudden, then you cross that threshold.
Impacts.
Lot of impacts.
Yeah, we should have that in our definition. Someone has impacts matter. Yeah, because Chin Deer was supposed to have trails on it for public access. That's one of the things in their development. Uh, I, I, I've been up there. It's such a mess, but I did, I saw one trail at the southern end, but I don't know where that, where they all go.
It's supposed to connect up.
We'll see.
Okay, so next week we will embark on looking at this comprehensive change package and sort of scoping it out and deciding where we're gonna go.
Uh, you should also expect interviews for the vacancy vows position. We've got two letters of, uh, interest so far, so.
Can you say who?
Valerie. Oh.
Yeah, Valerie's position, um, Anne Kazee was one of them and Chuck Ollie was one. Chuck came to the last meeting to, uh, testify about the setbacks and Anne, uh, had been in contact with me a number of times. I don't know if she was one of the applicants for that or not. I believe that she was, but I, I'm not positive. So if, in either case, it'd be, uh, perspective from the SR district, which we currently do not have.
Are you still accepting, uh, letters of interest?
Yeah, we'll accept it until Friday.
Okay. But you can only take one seat.
You're back, August.
Okay. We threw our agenda. And there's no other business we can technically take up, so we have a motion to adjourn.
Is that everything? Uh, I'll say.
Okay.
Second.
Stay in adjourned. Thank you all.
Good to see you guys.
See you next Monday.
Yep, see you next week.
Hey, everybody.
Can we just appoint August while he's not here?
Still here.
I'm sure you'll find somebody really good. There should be more different people.